To order the meeting of the Chattanooga City Council for today, Tuesday, July 1, 2025. To get us started, I'd like to invite Councilman Clark to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the indication.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us bow our heads, please. Gracious and eternal God, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to serve our community. Grant us wisdom in our deliberations, compassion in our decisions, and unity in our purpose. Help us to listen with open hearts, speak with integrity, and lead with courage. Bless the people of our city, every neighbor, every family, every voice. May our work today bring hope, progress, and justice for all. In your holy name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Can I get a motion on the minutes?
Stop moving.
Okay, council, we have a motion with a proper second. Minutes will stand without any objection. All right, so let's get going on review of this week's proposed agenda. Council, we only have one item on final read today. Moving into first read, we have an item related to the city attorney. Councilman Elliott.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is pertaining to this particular item. Phil, could you give us a a breakdown, excuse me, is this appropriate, Madam Chair? You okay with this? Can you give us a breakdown as to exactly what this is and its end outcome?
Oh, yeah, there is one item on the list here involving the city attorney's office here today, and that is for an amendment to the code that we have a request regarding the code official who previously had been in the Department of Equity and Community Development, and that is they have now been switched over to the folks in the Public Works Department because they are handling the issues with property development here. And so their only changes that were involved in this were giving them the authority and their chain of command being in the Public Works Department.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Charlie.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, items B and C are in Public Works are in my district, and I would request that one of my colleagues please make a motion to defer these items two weeks until the 15th of July. Both of these are right-of-way abandonment applications, and I am working through some opportunities to create public walkways through them that are maintained by the entity that would have the right-of-way abandonment, so time will tell. Okay, moving into wastewater, do we have any questions about that item in District 8?
No.
All right, under resolutions, we have an item under planning. Councilman Clark, that's in your district. I think we have an update there.
Yes, ma'am. We do have an update in regards to the applicant has put in a request to the city attorney's office to withdraw. During our business meeting, I'll be making a motion to accept that withdrawal.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, council, we have a Public Works item. Short agenda this week. Okay, looking at purchases. One, two, three, four, five items for purchase this week. Hit your light if you have any questions.
Sorry, I think I'm still, I do have a question. I'm still active.
Okay.
This is a question, Madam Chair, for the Fleet Management Division in Public Works as it relates to, and I usually will send these questions to Debbie, but this, my week has not allowed me to do so. But I've got a question about the $122,000 purchase of the Ford F-150. Is this an appropriate time to have someone approach the podium?
Yes.
Perhaps Mr. Woods, just kind of give some explanation about the item description and as it relates to the sewer, because it's coming out of the Inseptor Sewer Capital Fund.
This would actually be better answered by Mark, because all we do is facilitate the purchases. We don't have the justification for him.
Is Mark here? But we have a wastewater representative here.
His deputy. Lawrence Carter, Mark's on PTO.
Okay, so the question was about the the purchase of the 2025 Ford F-450 regular cab diesel with auto crane liftgate and utility body.
Yes. Do you have any information on that?
The justification for that, I, again, I would say it's better to have Mark go and answer that, but because all of our trucks are going to be very specific to the job they're doing. That's all I can say at this time. So I can get you a justification.
Okay, we're set to vote on this tonight. And so the administrator of Public Works, do you, it's coming out of your division. Do you not have any information on it, or?
Councilman, we'll get you an answer before the before the business meeting.
After the recess. Okay, do you have some information, Mr. Woods, or?
I actually do have some information.
Okay, yeah.
So these vehicles are used for the camera systems
Thank you.
that are walked, that are dispatched around the city so they can scope the pipes.
And they're being placed on Ford F-150s?
Yes.
Is that because of the weight of the camera systems?
Yes, the camera system and all the supporting things that go along with it.
Okay, and my last question is that of the big, well, it's a bidding question. I'm not going to draw that question, but I wish this would have been purchased in the state of Tennessee so some of that sales tax dollars would have stayed in our state, but it's going to Dalton, Georgia.
Yeah, we're restricted by the personnel or the agencies that have actually applied for those. We can't control what state, like who does that within the state.
I think, do, does anyone have any other questions? I guess for for me, you know, when we're looking at these high-ticket items, it's under, we, our agenda goes out into our communities and we get calls like, what do I need a 2025 Ford F-150 for? Is it raining on the road? Whatever. And so just kind of understanding the justification for this amount and for that year as it relates to a critical need in our city, which I'm hearing this is something related to sewer and cameras to go into the different, the pipelines.
We can start pushing that information as well.
Okay.
Awesome.
Got you. All right, thank you. I appreciate your answer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you both. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure who to drag this to. It's probably not to either one of you gentlemen. This is about the traffic signal systems purchase of the 644,000, I'm sorry.
DTS, Department of Technology Services.
Well, Technology Services, but.
Is this for the terrorists?
Yes.
Purchase.
Yeah, yeah. So I know that we needed some hardware to be able to sync some lights on Cummins Highway and Broad Street. Does this have anything to do with that project, or is this?
No, sir, it does not. This has to do with one of our grants. But I can give you an update on where we are with the hardware for Cummins Highway.
Okay.
So all of that is ordered now. It's been ordered from sometime between the end of May through the middle of June. We've got some supply chain delays, three, four weeks before we can receive that equipment. Once we have the equipment in hand, we already have the traffic ops team set to go out. It'll take about a week to get it installed. And we've got four different intersections and a range of things that we're going to do out there from cabinet upgrades to controllers to signals to new ADA ramps, new ADA signal, push buttons, and the like.
Okay, all right.
That's that's the story on that one, but this is different. This is what for our grant called the ATC MTD grant. It's about a $9 million grant from the federal government.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, you good, Councilman?
I'm good.
Councilman Harvey.
One more question for Jeremy. Sorry. Just from my understanding in in the councils, just since I'm still new to this and trying to learn how things roll, what is, do you all look at used vehicles, or is it just new vehicles when you do a purchase like this? How does that work?
We don't have the ability to look at used vehicles, so it's all new vehicles whenever we're going through that.
Okay, is there, is that just a policy, or how does that?
It's it's how the money, the dollars are associated with it for the purchasing. So to get a used vehicle, there's a lot of liability that's already assumed in that vehicle.
Gotcha.
So we're trying to get the best warranty.
Okay, understood. Makes sense. All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
What is the expected lifespan on a rig like this?
They're all different, ma'am. It depends on what they're being used for. Right now, we're trying to plan on a six to seven-year lifespan on every vehicle.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
You good, Councilman Harvey?
I am. Thank you.
Councilman Elliott.
Yes, this is about the enterprise rent-a-car contract. I don't know if anybody in the parking. Jay, you getting your workout today, huh?
It's all about getting steps, Sam, right?
Yeah. I'm just curious. I know we're following the state's contract on this one. Are we expecting them to close out this contract or renew it? And I think the question I have, I know we have a decent amount of our vehicles that we contract out through Enterprise. And so, for example, if the state does close out this contract, what would be our plans going forward?
We would have to go back out to bid. We are expecting them to renew it.
Oh, we are expecting to renew?
And then we would jump right on that.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Dan. All right. See, Jay, you're good.
You could have said that before I came.
Thanks. Thank you both.
All right, council, any other questions about purchases? All right, I will let you know that we do not have any renewals tonight. We do have one RFP format recommendation related to the library. We do not have any emergency purchases tonight. Okay. All right, let's go back to our agenda and just briefly look at other business.
You will now have one less certificate of compliance for this evening, but there is one compliance for the QuickTrip location, which is a wine and grocery store request.
Thank you very much, Phil. Okay, so looking at next week, we'll have a handful of items on final reading. We also, council, will have items under planning. We will have a planning and zoning committee today. Councilwoman Dotley.
For other business, I did, it's just appropriate time to address the budget.
Please, go ahead.
All right, council, well, fortunately and unfortunately, it's that time again. We will be doing budget work sessions to address first responder pay. So this will public notice this as well, so just note the dates. At a 9:00 a.m. start time, first budget work session to address first responder pay will be July 15th, Tuesday, July 15th. The second work session will be July 22nd, and the third budget work session will be July 29th. Just to follow along the lines of that of this schedule, we will have a public hearing August 19th, and then first read August 26th, and depending on how that goes, if it goes well, second read will be September the 9th. So just kind of keep, please keep that schedule in mind, and thank you, Madam Chair. And if you don't mind, does anyone from the administration, Kevin or Darren, have any additional information about that?
Thank you, Budget Chair. No, I think you covered it. So we are going to sit down and spend a bunch of time through these working sessions to dig into, on the first day, we're going to do current state of both the police and the fire budgets and have good conversation around both of those agencies, current levels of funding and some of the challenges that they're facing there. And then subsequent to that, we'll do a deep dive on what we know so far about reassessment and laying out different scenarios. Then in the afternoon of that budget work session, we will, we will take a look at some different scenarios amending the current budget and the impacts that that might have. And then in the last working session, we're going to, in the morning, have an opportunity for you guys to bring proposals to us. And then in the afternoon, we will bring some proposals to you. And then we'll have a layover period of about nine days, I think, if memory serves, during which we, the administration will finalize a proposal via ordinance that we would then post and have a hearing on and move forward from there.
All right. Thank you so much, Kevin, and we look forward to more information at those sessions. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Lots of opportunity for council engagement. I appreciate that. Madam Chair, thank you. So looking at our two-week agenda, we will be having our planning and zoning today. So let's take a look if anybody has any questions under resolutions. Economic Development, Finance, Human Resources. Under the mayor's office, we will have all of the the ARPA final allocations from allocated and accrued unallocated and accrued interest from the ARPA dollars. We have those handful of agencies that just spoke with us at strategic planning. So I hope everybody got your questions answered. Okay, I don't see anybody's lights, so let's take a look at future considerations, please, council. Councilman Elliott.
I have two questions, and the first is on economic development, item B. And if you want me to wait after this one, Madam Chair, I'm happy to.
Okay.
Is this for the current, I don't know, is somebody from Parks here?
I'll try.
Okay. Is this for the current state skate park?
Yes.
I thought we already had all of the funding for that. Is this for additional funding, or?
Is anyone from?
But this is for, this is a brownfields grant
Oh, okay.
that would be used, you're talking about the $500,000 grant?
Yeah, yeah.
This would be for, this is for a plot farm if awarded, except up to $500,000 with no city match, brownfields grant for any kind of brownfield condition that may be to be addressed at the site.
Does it have, is it a brown, does it sit on a brownfield?
Yes, if we're applying for a brownfield grant, yes.
Okay, okay, but this is just for the remediation, not necessarily for the development of park. The reason I ask, I thought the park was fully funded already.
We have a little over $3 million funded for the park. The original, or the actual cost came in a little over that. So applying for this grant allows us to be able to still build what we want to without having to value engineer it down to the money that we have. And this grant then will be used to do the initial, because it's the, was it foundry sand? I think is what the issue is on the ground. So we can use that for the initial remediation park and then use our other money to build the park.
This may be an ignorant question, but how were we able to build the current park if it was already a brownfield there?
I'm going to venture to say that that park's been there so long that that probably wasn't an issue when it was built.
Okay, all right.
It also sits on top of all.
It's a cap on top of it.
The way it was built might be part of how they did that.
Okay, perfect. All right, I was just confused. Madam Chair, would you like to wait for my next question?
I don't have any other lights, so go ahead.
Okay, my next one is Parks and Outdoors, the Downtown Chattanooga Alliance. Are we looking to allocate them this $150,000? Not to see, or 118, is, are we allocating this to them?
We are proposing to do that, yes. So, Councilman Elliott, this is part of an endeavor that we took up last year with DCA to help us with Miller Park. And so you may or may not recall, but there was a period of time during which Miller Park was not being utilized in its highest and best potential use. And in order to restore the park to a place that people would want to go, required some attention over and above what we were able to provide via parks and via contracted security. And so DCA came forward with a proposal to do it themselves. And so this would be to continue that that effort at Miller Park to ensure that it stays accessible.
Is, does Miller Park currently sit in their geographical boundary?
It does.
I think, I think the only question I have, I thought the purpose of the bid was to help offset costs that the bids saw necessary. And I thought the, excuse my ignorance, but I thought when they had this huge conversation about the bid years ago, it's like, you know, we need these extra funds to make sure that we can take care of services that the city cannot. And I think it's a little ironic that we're finding ourselves here having to inject money into a service as was supposed to circumvent the city.
Sure, and I can certainly appreciate that history. What we have asked them to do at Miller Park is over and above the enumerated scope.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, I'm just curious. I didn't, I don't know. All right, I'm good.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a question under seven, under planning. This might be a technical question for the city attorney's office.
This is, this is in future considerations?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Sorry, under future considerations, number seven, planning, it's a certificate of compliance for the 7-Eleven. But in the explanatory note, it says this is from the beer board allowing the sale of wine. So do all of our certificate of clients go there first and then it comes here in the 60-day?
The applications go to them. They actually fill out the information, do a records check and a background check, and then it goes forward. It also goes to the folks in the regional planning agency as well to confirm the distances.
And one of the things I want to note, Madam Chair, is that when we, what I had to learn the hard way in the situation dealing with the certificate of clients on Highway 58, that there is a 60-day window
Yes.
that council has to act upon, and usually the application and payment is sent to the treasurer's office. So what is the difference between this going to the beer board versus the other certificate of compliance going to the treasurer's office?
I believe in this case, it's a wine and grocery type application on the front end of it here.
Okay.
And that's, that's the reason that they had wine in the store. It's a convenience store location as opposed to just a liquor store.
Got you. And so the difference in the types of sale determines where the application originates from. Okay. I want to, the reason why I ask that question is because when it goes to the treasurer's office and maybe to your office for review, oftentimes, we're not given enough time to review that application with the applicant or the community. And then sometimes we might be forced to make a decision when we have maybe a week or two in that 60-day timeframe. So I think we need to look at some process improvement. When those applications originate out of the treasurer's office, we need to be notified immediately to allow ourselves more runway to do the due diligence with the community. So I want to make note on that because here we are again with a certificate of compliance and good old District 5, which in this case, I do support. I want to be on the record that the difference between this one is that this is not near a school or church.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We'll get it on as quick as we can.
Good, good point about a process improvement, that much like when zoning applications go in for for the council person in that district to be alerted. I think would be good. Kevin, will you make a note of that, please? Thank you very much. Councilwoman Dotley.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just want to bring just a little clarity for that Parks item for the Downtown Chattanooga Alliance for Councilman Elliott. Miller Park is not in the bid area. They were doing the work with the grant that they had to kind of assist the city of Chattanooga in managing that park. And the funds ran out because they, you know, they have their own fees in their own area that they manage. But the program was going so well that the city has asked to continue that program. And so they're continually raising money to do that, but it is not currently in their boundaries, if I'm not mistaken. But we can follow up with Steve Brooks about that. I think he'll be here in a couple of weeks anyway. But we can follow up about that, but this is currently not in their boundaries and they're performing this additional service to try to keep the park clean and nice everywhere. So that's all that was. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dotley. And Kevin, I appreciate that additional info, too. I think highlighting the additional work that they're doing down there, because I know Miller Park can get chaotic and probably put a huge burden on our park staff. So I think that clarification was, I was just trying to work that out. So, Councilwoman Dotley, I appreciate you and Chief Staff Rogue for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council, that brings us to the end of our future considerations. I think we are ready to move into Legislative Committee. Whoa, 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 hold up, but I got Councilwoman first. She's like sneaking in.
Just going back to the to the bid and the parks funding, I just have a question for somebody, not sure. When I do an event at Miller Park, as an organization, outside organization, do an event at Miller Park, I pay a fee, I have to pay a fee, usage fee. Do those funds go towards these services?
They do not. What we're asking, the bid to do is over and above what funds for reservations pay for.
Okay, so what do those funds go towards if they don't go towards maintaining, helping to cover the expense of caring for the park?
Well, generally speaking, they do go towards that purpose, but the situation specific to Miller Park was that that level of service was inadequate to prevent Miller Park from becoming what it had become in terms of just trash and
Yeah, okay.
people and challenging situations there. And so this is, this is a calibrated effort to try to restore Miller Park to its intended purpose.
I agree. I just am curious if there's other sources of funding when, you know, if I pay, have to pay $1,500 to rent the park for an event, you can, does any portion of that money help to offset these costs so it's not coming out of the budget? Or maybe it is.
Sure, and I would submit that it does help to free the cost. But for those reservation fees, the cost that we would be asking you guys for this purpose would be higher.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'll add that in my experience with the Downtown Chattanooga Alliance, they've, they've really, I have witnessed a real delivery of a high level of services. And I think as it relates to their I have witnessed a real delivery of, of a high level of services. And I think as it relates to, um, their relationships that they've built with, um, some of our homeless residents, um, they've been able to do some, uh, make some, some good headway. And I think in a very respectful way. So, um, you know, when I see things like, um, clean, sanitize, and remove biohazards, it's not something that we standard, we are looking at, you know, fortunately for all of our parks. And so Kevin, you've used quite a lot of euphemisms to say this, this place had really gotten to be a place that a lot of people didn't want to be. Um, and we want to make sure it stays really welcoming. So that ancillary service, um, I think will be, continue to be very helpful. Um, so. All right, I hand it over to you, not a vice chair, to chair our legislative.
Hey, I will call now this meeting of legislative committee to order. May I have approval on the minutes?
Sure.
All right, thank you. So council family, first, we only have one item on the agenda to actually discuss, but I am going to ask Madam Chair if she would take a couple of minutes to answer a couple of questions that was from her single stair. Okay, so I will turn it over to you to address that.
Thank you very much. Um, so counsel, I really appreciate all the questions that you had related to the single stair proposed ordinance. Um, this, uh, this council asked me, uh, one major question, which was about the fiscal note. And Hanukkah Van Derzen, who has done so much of the, the work on this policy, very quickly went to LDO and to the fire department and confirmed that implementing the legislation would be cost neutral. There is a document in your packet and in the digital packet that lists that. Also, um, just for your edification, I also included the link to the YouTube video, um, that Melissa had found. Uh, it's about 10 minutes that gives you quite a bit of background for that. So, um, and there's a tiny URL in case you don't have the live link. So, um, happy to answer any other questions. Um, feel like we've got good support. And so I'd like to move, uh, I, I'd like to put it on the agenda and the two-week agenda, but, um, first, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Council family, okay. So then we will move this to an agenda for the next two weeks.
Thank you very much.
You are so welcome. That was quick.
I promised I would be.
Yes. Now, let's see. All right, okay, I'm, I'm looking for you. So we have our ordinance that is being brought forth by Councilman Henderson. It's been, as of last week, you were not here, but I told them it has been in your suitcase pocket for a long time. So you're going to have the opportunity to bring it forth. So if you're ready, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thought it might, uh, serve better to make this presentation from here, uh, maybe. Um, I'll try to make this brief, but, uh, the purpose of this legislation, uh, and you, you all should have a copy, a hard copy in your, uh, packets. Uh, purpose of this, uh, is to provide, is, purpose of this provision is to provide standards for the keeping of urban chickens. About four or five months ago, I heard the U.S. Secretary of Agricultural, Agriculture say, uh, we were importing eggs from Turkey, uh, which I thought strange. Uh, but this ordinance would allow Chattanoogaans to be as sustainable and self-sufficient as they would like to be and not have to depend on eggs from a foreign country, uh, for their food source. A couple of highlights of this ordinance, uh, only female chickens, which we'll refer to as laying hens, are allowed. No roosters, uh, in any zone other than A1, uh, which is currently allowed. Uh, you can keep up to eight laying hens, uh, at a single-family resident, residential lot. Uh, laying hens must be kept in a fenced enclosure in the rear yard at all times. Uh, in addition to the fenced enclosure, laying hens shall be provided with a covered predator-resistant hen house. Obviously, laying hens must be, uh, kept secure in an enclosure at all times. Uh, the food that you would need for your laying hens must be either kept indoors or in a weather-resistant container. Uh, enforcement of this ordinance shall be administered either through the Land Development Office and/or McCamey Animal Center, which McCamey is handling their, uh, chicken complaints now. Uh, many of you may already know this, uh, many residents are keeping chickens in the city now in residential areas. Uh, full disclosure, I have chickens. I have an A1 piece of property, I mean, yeah, A1 piece of property. I tell people all the time, some of the best chickens I've ever bought was in District 6. So, uh, so people are, uh, currently keeping chickens in the city of Chattanooga. And, uh, most of the time the, the chickens are confiscated is when McCamey goes out on a, a dog complaint or a dog call. Uh, and they notice, uh, chickens in a, in a neighbor's yard, uh, and they, uh, wind up having to confiscate them, which is really what kind of led me to, uh, to this ordinance. Uh, we are subscribing to behind the times here in, in Chattanooga. Uh, cities that already allow urban chickens are Signal Mountain, Red Bank, Nashville, and Clarksville. So despite what some people tell you, the sky will not fall if we pass this ordinance. Uh, that concludes my little brief presentation. Be happy to take any questions at this point in time that you might have.
Okay. Well, this boy just lit up like a little Christmas tree.
Oh, is it? I hope everybody's going to tell me how much they're in favor of this.
Councilwoman Dotley, and then followed by Councilwoman Burris.
Right, thank you so much, Madam Chair. And yes, I will tell you how much I am in favor of that.
Thank you.
Uh, but I do have a few questions for you. Uh, but I do have a few questions in regards to this. So my first question, uh, trying to get in the habit of having fiscal notes attached to our legislation. Um, so how much would this cost to implement? That would be my, one of my questions. Uh, and then in the ordinance, under the first, uh, the new section we're adding, Section 7-145, it did state, uh, this intended to be, uh, to create standards and requirements on a trial basis. Uh, is there a timeframe for the trial? How long the trial basis?
Well, you know, that, that is one thing that, um, I didn't put a sunset date in here. And then, and that is one thing that we can certainly add if we need to. That was, that was one of the suggestions that I had that, hey, we'll put it in for a trial basis. And, uh, you know, typically, uh, we'll do a sunset of, of a year.
Okay.
Um, if, you know, if the council would like to see, uh, some kind of sunset clause or, or a revisit clause in a year to, um, see if we want to continue if we've had any complaints. I, I believe if I'm not mistaken, that's what we did with the, uh, short-term vacation rental when we first passed that legislation.
Yeah, I think it would be good to add it in there just so we'll have that kind of follow-up data to see, you know, how did it, how did it go?
Are you good with the year?
I'm good with the year, mhm. Uh, and then the physical note, the fiscal note, the trial basis. And then under the section, um, let me see, A, B, Item 4, B4. I just need a little mouth example here. So for the purpose, is it for the purposes of this section?
Where, where you at now?
It's the second page, Item 4, B4.
Did you say the second page?
The second page, mhm.
Okay, so B, B4?
Four, yeah.
Okay.
It talks about the juvenile chickens.
Mhm.
Now chicks, uh, shall be counted against the limits of the number permitting laying eggs. So pretty much if you have, so a total of eight is what you can have, correct?
It's a total of eight, that's correct.
No matter what it is.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all. That was it?
Because a, a juvenile chick is obviously not a laying hen.
Right.
It takes about eight months for it to start laying. So they're juvenile up to about eight months.
Okay, and then so just a total of eight. And then for, uh, and then for the last, page four, under, uh, penalty, because I, I know we've always had, uh, issues with enforcement, uh, which is why, uh, I'm very much a fan of this, because irregardless of this legislation or not, people got chickens. I live in Eastlake, they have them, you know. Uh, and so under here it says, uh, either or, either they are cited to the court or they are cited to the administrative hearing officer. I guess my question would be, uh, who determines where they're cited to? So, cause so for instance, uh, the, I'm sorry, this is Item I, I apologize. Um, for instance, a simple penalty and a fine not exceeding $50, which may be imposed by the court or by administrative hearing officer. But we know that an administrative hearing officer can go up to $500 per day per offense. So who is, um, who is?
Well, that would be determined by the agency that, that, that goes out and, uh, I guess, issues the, the violation.
Okay.
So the vi, the violation could be administered, uh, through our Land Development Office, uh, through codes enforcement.
Okay.
Or if McCamey is out there and they notice that someone's in violation of, like they got chickens in the front yard or whatever. I mean, they write up a citation and then, uh, then follow up, you know, the, like, you're, I mean, I can only see the, the violations for administrative hearing officer, you know, if, if they don't have the structure or the fencing in place that they need to secure the chickens.
Okay, so is it something we can kind of outline? Well, not kind of, if it's something we can outline, what, kind of what offense goes to where? So what is, you know, maybe they, if they got nine hens instead of eight, you know, that seems like more of a minor offense as versus the one you just mentioned, where they just got them out here loose and wild, just wild birds out here. Um, and that type of offense then goes to administrative hearing officers. So I think that would be the other piece, like where, where's the line? Where's that drawn? And that way they can have a clear determination of who goes where, you know, and things like that. And that, that prevents kind of discriminatory actions toward some groups and not others. So that's, and that's all my,
Okay.
all my questions or, and everything. So thank you, Chairman Henderson. And thank you for holding on to this. And I appreciate you. Yes, that's it. Thank you, uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
You are welcome. Okay, Councilwoman Burris?
Councilwoman Henderson?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, uh, I've heard from several people in my district, it's probably about 50/50, you know, people that want it and people that don't. And, and I, I am, I'm not opposed to people having chickens. What I am concerned about is the enforcement. And who is going to hold people to the requirements that are set forth? I think the requirements are good, they make sense. My concern is enforcement. And, um, so I guess I'd like to hear, I don't know if there's a representative from LDO, I doubt there's a representative from McCamey, but what would be their plans for enforcement on top of other things they're already having to enforce? Um, because I think that's, from the people that I've talked to that are against it, you know, they're, they're not like animal haters. But they are concerned about the quality of life in their neighborhood being altered if people don't meet the requirements. So.
Oh, we got somebody from McCamey.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Seth Watson. I'm the Director of Animal Services with McCamey Animal Center. Most of the complaints that we get about fowl are the nuisance by noise, but from roosters or about the fowl running out large. And, uh, both of those things are not allowed with this change.
So what has been your experience when, when you have to call on one of those folks? Does it get remediated? Do the, do the chickens go away? Are you ending up having to go back? What's, how's it work?
Typically, we will either give them a warning and a timeframe to get rid of the, the fowl, or we will give them a citation with, with the requirement that they get rid of the chickens by the court date.
And what stats do you show having to repeat going back to the same home more than once?
I would say that, uh, 95% of the time, they do, uh, re-home the fowl and do not re-vent.
They send them to Lookout Valley to.
That's right. That's where all the chickens go to run.
So I guess, a question, then I guess, thank you very much for that explanation. Um, and I guess I'd wanted to go saying thing from LDO, uh, at some point as we're having this conversation. Uh, the other question I have is how, how are we ensuring before it gets to the point where somebody has to file a complaint that folks are meeting the requirements, they're setting up the houses, you know, the hen houses appropriately? Is there like a, you know, I, when I have a, if I have a dog, I have a dog, I have to get that dog licensed. And so I have to meet certain requirements, make sure that she has her rabies shots, um, and I get a tag. Um, have, has there been any conversation about if I decide that I'm going to have chickens in an urban neighborhood, is there a licensure or certification I have to go through? Because it's an expensive venture, you know, you can't just go out and throw chickens in the backyard. You do have to prepare it. Yeah, it's not inexpensive. That I would imagine if somebody is really that passionate about doing it, that they could, that they would go through a process to make sure that we checked all the boxes and been proactive so that, so that they're not becoming a nuisance in the neighborhood.
So when I compiled this, I'm, I'm, in fact, I used, I think, Red Banks and looked at Signal Mountains. And, and I'd have to go back, but I think by memory, I don't think Red Bank was requiring permits. And I thought actually that seemed to be a little bit cleaner process, just to establish some standards by which we keep chickens. Most of the, most of the complaints from chickens, I believe, are, uh, constituent, uh, initiated. I mean, in other words, it's usually a neighbor, or like I said, McCamey goes out on a dog call and they find chickens in somebody's yard. I think if you're going to keep chickens, you're, uh, in my opinion, you're going to have them enclosed. You're going to have them, you're going to have a hen house. But this just gives us some teeth that if we do go out and we find that they don't have these provisions, then we require them to, or, or we will begin whatever legal action that we need to take. I was trying to avoid, what, what happens many times with permitting, and I think it was, uh, Councilwoman Dotley was talking about the expense to the city, what I was trying to do was avoid creating some kind of, bureaucracy or administrative fee that now we've, we've sort of having to take on a new role of permitting of, you know, then that begs the question, do we go out and then inspect hen houses? And I think that gets into some areas that we really don't want to get into. But I think this at least sets standards so that if somebody is in violation, we can at least cite them. They can either make the corrections or, uh, we'll go and take them to court.
And one more question, Madam Chair.
Take your time.
With McCamey, uh, have you, what conversations have you all had relative to, once the store gets open, the, um, the staffing to be able to handle it? I know it's kind of a moving target.
Well, I mean, they sort, they sort of handle it now. I mean, like I said, when they go out on a dog call and they see chickens in somebody's yards, they're already writing the citations. And, I mean, y'all confiscate roosters now, right? I mean, I say confiscate, I mean.
Yeah, most of what we deal with with roosters and fowl are, uh, get resolved by the owners rehoming the animals. But we do deal with it weekly and issue citations weekly for fowl. And, uh, and we get complaints weekly about, and it's mostly fowl running out large in the streets.
But now, now we're opening it up to say you can have them. So I guess, have you all had, what conversations have you all had relative to, you know, this may increase our load. Are we prepared for that?
Um, I haven't had many conversations because this is kind of new to me as well.
Okay.
Um, but I, I do think that it will increase the time that we spend on, uh, foul cases for McCamey.
Okay.
But I, I also am in, in support of people owning fowl in the city. And so I anticipate, uh, that when we get complaints, uh, we will be educating the public about the requirements for fowl and setting a recheck date for McCamey to, to come back out and visit to make sure that they've come into compliance with the requirements.
Okay, thank you. Uh, which brings me to one final question. If this were to get passed, what is the plan for educating the public, but leading up to its, its in ordinance now? So that, so we can preempt and that it's either for either one of you. I guess Chairman Henderson, it's, it's, it's preemptive versus we're preparing you for, this is what's going to happen, this is what you can expect the requirements to be. Now it's, now it's in place.
Well, I mean, I think it's with any law, just making, making the constituents aware of, you know, what the requirements are. And that's through, you know, posting in the newspaper, websites, you know, things of that nature.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Is that it? Okay. Next, Madam Chair Hill. I mean, Clark, I'm sorry. Councilman Clark.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, two quick questions, Councilman Henderson. Uh, one relates to the demand for this piece of legislation. Uh, were there particular areas that said, hey, we want, we need this because we've seen an influx of people doing this maybe illegally? Like in areas where there's more agricultural opportunities. In my district, when I talk to people about this, there wasn't. In my district, when I talk to people about this, there wasn't, there's not a discontent for this, but we're like, well, we don't have any, a lot of chickens, maybe District Six, I don't know, but not in Five. So I guess my question is, is that District Six, yeah, whatever. I, it's making me hungry for fried chicken, by the way, so no offense to chicken people. But, uh, is there a demand for this in a particular area? And would you consider exclusionary districts if one district said, hey, you know what? We don't got this issue in District Five, would, can we be excluded from that similar to what we did in vacation rental homes?
I, I don't know that, I mean, and that's, that's how we wound up with an overlay in the, uh, uh, short-term vacation rentals, is some of the districts absolutely didn't want it. And, uh, I think this is either an up or down citywide thing as opposed to a, an overlay. So back in twenty thirteen, uh, Mr. Anderson would remember this, we did have, uh, uh, ordinance that came forward in twenty thirteen. It passed on first reading and it got voted down on second reading. And I think a lot of it was, um, here again, I, I think it's due to a lack of education of what people think chickens are going to bring, like, you know, a bunch of noise. That's the reason we've excluded roosters. Uh, that's the reason they have to be enclosed, entirely enclosed so that predators can't get to them. Their pens have to be clean to keep down disease. Uh, all of those things are pretty ma- are made clear in the ordinance. But my point was, at that time, I had, uh, several people, you know, emailing me in support of that. And since then, I guess one particular instance of the lady that was keeping, uh, chickens, and I think it was on Norre Reed Road, and I think, again, I think that was in District Six. Again, McCamey came, went out on a dog call and spotted the chickens in this lady's yards and made her aware of the fact that she was going to have to get rid of them, which upset her greatly. She came to council and I just started having conversation with her. There have been other people that have emailed me and, you know, contacted me about the ability to be able to keep chickens in their backyards. And I think it's, uh, for many people, you know, it's a sustainability issue, it's a self-sufficiency issue. But I don't know that there's a, a big outcry, you know, citywide for it. But I have had some constant email of, hey, could we please get something, uh, a chicken ordinance forward, uh, in the city? So, uh, and I've had, as somebody referred, I've had it in my back pocket for a little while.
Well, uh, I plan to support this. I think it's a good thing. I think people use things such as this as a secondary form of income. And I think it, I supported, I haven't received a lot of, I haven't received any opposition for this in District Five. Uh, so I do plan to support this. My last question is in regards to the, um, in the case of multifamily zones. This piece of legislation allows up to ten, um, hens, laying hens per, in a complex to be maintained on a common property. So when we say common property, that's not private property, but in a multifamily.
Well, like a duplex.
Like a duplex, okay.
duplex would have, it would be a, a common property where you, you know, obviously you've got two residences, but you, kind of a common backyard.
Got you. Would that cause issues? Like if I lived in one side and then my neighbor is, has a hen house? I, I guess my question is, does this work for multifamily? You know, multifamily meaning I'm sharing it with somebody else, i.e. a duplex? And considering the number of laying hens that's allowed for the residential units, it's, it's ten as opposed to the eight laying hens that's allowed for a single-family residential. So my only concern would be if I live in an apartment complex or duplex, because I live next to someone and I'm not, that's not my particular, that common area is shared, but who decides who gets to have a hen, a laying hens on the other side? I just think it could cause some controversy and I would consider maybe taking that, I would consider not allowing multifamily, uh, to be able to do that.
I just didn't want to exclude them. Uh, like I said, I, I basically pieced this ordinance together from two or three others, and that was, that was in some of the others. Now, I would think that the landlord would have a lot to say about a common shared area, whether you could have hens. And by the way, this also, uh, if you have an HOA and the HOA says you can't have, uh, chickens in your backyard, then, uh, you wouldn't be able to have chickens in your backyard. So, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to taking it out, I just don't want, I wouldn't want to discriminate against somebody that lives in a duplex.
duplex or apartment complex, yeah.
That would like to keep them and, you know, at, at some point, I would like to think that neighbors would be neighborly and work that out among themselves, but, you know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Henderson, thank you for the presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Couple of things just related to making sure we have good language here. So, um, Councilwoman Dotley brought up the penalty and enforcement section, and I feel like we actually have some conflicting information here. Might be able just to be solved with a quick strike through. But, um, in I, she was asking about the penalties that could be imposed by municipal court or an administrative hearing officer. But then in J, we say that it shall be enforced by the administrative hearing officer. So my inclination would be that all, that we strike, um, that the fine may be imposed by municipal court and just say it would be imposed by an administrative hearing officer. That would be a suggestion for you, uh, please to consider. I think that would be cleaner and the council seems to have a preference, um, for the flexibility of the administrative hearing officer. Um, also, given that the, um, that the administrative hearing officer has the ability to levy a higher fine, I wonder if we want to adjust the, um, that civil penalty and fine not exceeding fifty dollars to be whatever the full amount of the AHO, uh, could be. You know, you may end up having somebody that's doing chicken fighting. I mean, that, that would be something egregious. I see what you're saying, that most of the time we would expect that something would be mitigated well in advance, but I wouldn't want us to tie our hands.
Mr. Attorney, is there any reason we couldn't strike, uh, the municipal court and just send this to the?
I would recommend just include the language civil penalty, which may be imposed by an administrative hearing officer and leave it up to them on the amount. They have the authority by law on any zoning matter here to go up to five hundred dollars.
So we would, uh, strike and a fine not to exceed fifty dollars, which may be imposed by municipal court?
Yes, sir.
Could you be good with that?
Yeah, I mean, that gives us more flexibility, I think. Why, why, um, cap our ability to enforce knowing that, that we do have some, some questions along the way? And then that, that alleviates the conflict with J, so I would feel better about that. Also, you already have a review of one year in item J?
Well, I just noticed that and I, I had forgotten that was in there, but yeah, so it is.
So, yeah, I thought that that was a good idea. But one thing that went through my mind, and in the discussion, we may have gotten to, to a good place, because I was also thinking about fiscal note and, and permitting. So, uh, if we have chickens out there, new Chattanooga chickens, and they're there for a year, and then we revisit it, Mr. Attorney, um, do we then have non-conforming chickens that get to continue residing in the city of Chattanooga? Were we to sunset? And I think we may have headed in the right direction by not issuing chicken permits. If we don't issue a permit, then they aren't a non-conforming chicken permit holder, yeah?
Yes.
That would then have the right to have a chicken, should we? Are you following what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and the other argument as to that is this is not a zoning decision. This is simply in the animal ordinance for the city. And if it's no longer allowed as a permissive use, as an animal, uh, permissive use, then it's not a vested right under zoning.
Okay, so not a vested right. So if we, as Chattanoogaans, take good care of our chickens, we maintain our chicken privilege. But if we are crummy chicken owners, then we can always sunset it and we don't have to have non-conforming chickens.
And I'll be, I'll be honest, I mean, I don't see people rushing out to start keeping chickens because I think as, uh, Councilwoman Burris pointed out, I mean, it is expensive to get started keeping chickens. That is a lot of work. I mean, you've got to want to do that.
Right.
It's, it's not something that you just do on a whim. So, I mean, I don't expect us to be flooded with chickens in the, in the, in the first year of, of this ordinance.
Yeah, that makes sense. In some of our, in our language related to short-term vacation rentals, we did have, um, the acknowledgement of HOAs. Do we need that in this language?
I think it is in here. Restricted covenants under H.
Where'd you find it?
H, private property restrictions, homeowner association limitations.
Okay, super. And then finally, um, well, Councilman, uh, Clark, you mentioned this as a side income. I think it is important to note that this says you cannot sell your eggs. These are for private use.
Yeah.
So you can give your eggs, but you can't sell your eggs.
Basically, it prevents you from setting up a, a stand and selling eggs, you know, on the side of the road.
So my.
You can only do that in A1.
Uh, my final question, um, Councilman Henderson, and you've, you've alluded to some of these things, but what are some of the key concerns that you've heard pri- about chicken ownership and husbandry? And how have you addressed them within this ordinance?
So one was predators, they felt like it would.
Predators, I've heard that from my district.
Predators and, and having, uh, you know, with, uh, predator-proof, uh, food enclosures. Having, uh, the chickens enclosed in the backyard, the fence has to be, I'd have to look. Thought I marked it how high the fence had to be. And then, uh, your hen house has to be totally enclosed. So the chickens can go in at night and then not miss objective to predators. The other was, uh, noise, which eliminating the rooster, uh, obviously eliminates a lot of the noise. I'd challenge anybody to, uh, complain about hens making a lot of noise. I mean, you're welcome to come to my house and see how well my hens are.
Okay. Uh, what about, uh, you mentioned briefly disease and certainly, you know, bird flu comes up in the media occasionally. Can you talk to us about how we would mitigate that concern?
Bird flu?
Yeah.
To my knowledge, I, I've never, I mean, I think in the state of Tennessee, I, I've not read of a case of bird flu. But I think bird flu basically, uh, is when, uh, like wild birds come in and they are, they're able to get into the chicken coop or into the chicken hen house. Uh, I think by, by having your, you know, your fences, I've got a top over my fence. I mean, nothing can get in there. So I think, I think the danger of the spread of bird flu is going to be very low. I'm, I'm not going to say it's not going to be impossible. But, and that, and that was the other thing, uh, that there was some concern about, you know, some disease. But I think with any animal, you run the risk of having a disease. Dogs get diseases, cattle, I mean, horse, I mean, a lot of animals are, are subject to disease. So, I mean, it's just a, it's just a matter of having good hygiene in your hen houses.
Okay, that's all, thank you very much.
All right, you too.
That's all, thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Uh, you know, I, I, I support this as well. I think the only question I have is not necessarily for you. Uh, I'm more curious about, um, not as much even the land development office enforcement, McCamey. And I'm, uh, this may be a larger conversation.
It probably is.
Just this. You know, I get complaints and concerns from my district quite a bit about McCamey's, uh, capacity to enforce and monitor the communities we already have. And so I, I don't know if you feel like you've spoken enough on this and I, I don't want to have to reshape this tree, but I think this may all, all, open up an opportunity for our council for us also to talk about what that capacity looks like. And if you guys feel confident, you guys can handle this. Cause, you know, regardless, if somebody wants chickens in the yard, they're going to have them whether we pass this ordinance or not. And I think that's just the truth of the matter. I'm, I don't live far from Councilwoman Dotley, I live in my district.
This might get clearer.
But I don't live far from Councilwoman Dotley. And my neighbors themselves, they have chickens. Don't get attached because you may see them there for two weeks and you'll see them again. And, but, um, it's just the way it is, but.
The city where people do have, uh, fowl, that they might have trouble coming into full compliance with what this o- ordinance asks for as far as the requirements about the, um, hen, hen, hen house and, uh, the proper preventative measures to make sure that, uh, predators aren't getting to them and, uh, the other requirements in here. So I would anticipate that, uh, that a sizable amount of the time when we came back for the rechecks, they would not be in full compliance. And so I, I think that we still would be having a lot of situations where we are telling people that, hey, you are not meeting the requirements, you still have to rehome your fowl. But it would, this, this would allow for responsible owners who can come into compliance to own fowl. And so as far as how much time and energy we're going to be spending on it, that's hard for me to guess right now, but we already do spend some of our time on fowl. And at this point, we only have one solution is to tell them to rehome the fowl. And so, like I said earlier, I do think we will be spending more time on fowl. I just can't anticipate how much more time we would spend on it.
I think this, like I said, I think this opens up a good question. And, uh, Chairwoman Hill, this may be, uh, something we discuss further, but it may be an opportunity for this council to have a better look at McCamey. I don't know the last time the council's really had an opportunity to hear from our animal control arm. Separate from this, separate from this, this ordinance is, I'm fine, I support this ordinance. I think this is, this is, this is fine. But I think in the future, this could be an opportunity for us to just discuss where, where are some challenges and opportunities with our animal control arm? And what resources, um, are being put to good use? And where additional support is needed, um, to make sure that not only can you guys service the additional ads we're about to bring upon you, but how well are you guys servicing the, the current workloads you guys have running? That's all, Madam Chair.
Are you good? Okay, thank you. Councilman Harvey.
Councilman Henderson, I just want to say I'm eggstatic about this ordinance.
You get it, eggstatic.
Here, here they come.
Okay, it's a good dad joke. Uh, I, I do have a real question.
Okay.
So, so walk me through, uh, the reasoning that you can't, uh, do incubation and hatching of chicks?
Well, here again, I put together, uh, if that's something that y'all were wildly in favor of, I don't have a problem with it. I just took some ordinances from other cities that seemed to work, and that was in their ordinances. When you start incubating and, and hatching chickens, you, you sort of start to get over into the business of chickens. I mean, you're, you're not going to, you're not going to want to incubate eight chickens. You, you know what I'm saying, or, you know, eight, eight eggs. You're better just to go to, uh, Tractor Supply and buy you eight pullets as opposed to incubating them. You're, you're starting to, you're starting to create a business if you're incubating eggs and hatching them. And now you got a bunch of little chicks running around that you've got to do something with because you're hopefully going to have more than eight, uh, running around. So it, it, it's really becomes more of a business at that point rather than just raising chickens for eggs.
Okay, all right, that's all.
Are you good?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else from the council family? Okay, so I will have my say.
Uh-oh.
Thank you. So I am not as ecstatic. The Great District Gate is not as ecstatic because I think we have every chicken that's, nobody else don't have in District Gate. So, um, I get at least ten calls a month from, uh, my constituents in ref complaining, or I won't say complaining, uh, having an issue about chickens. And a lot of time it is roosters. They're saying that they are crowing at three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning. And then they, uh, we've had, um, some pictures sent where the, the chickens and the dogs are fighting and a really, really big mess. And my concern, like a couple of other of my council family here is enforcement. Because I know for a fact that McCamey has been called several times, um, in the Bushtown area of the Great District Gate. And to no avail, the chickens have been confiscated. And they were walking down the street. And they were walking down the street, across the yards and every place else. But then it was told to me, and this is strictly hearsay because I didn't see it, that when they got there, that they had caught the chickens and put them in the house so they couldn't go in the house and get them. But I had a lot of individuals call me yesterday, probably about 14, that was in favor of. But none of them was from the Great District Gate. So there was East Ridge, there was Hickson, there was East Brainerd that had no issue, and Fergie Place, I had a couple from Fergie Place. That is in the Great District Gate that was in favor of. But, and I think that it's because there's not a whole lot of chickens in their area. But in Bushtown, Churchville, they run a while.
Well, and that's what, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that's what this ordinance is attempting to do is, like I said, create some standards to whereby they can come in compliance. If they really want to keep their chickens, that they can and do it legally and do it in a way that it doesn't impose on their neighbors or keep their neighbors from enjoying their quite, you know, quite peaceful enjoyment of their homes.
And if they could be contained in an enclosedment, that was sufficient, not one that's rigged. Where they are put, what, two posts and maybe a piece of wire or cardboard on top or something, you know? That's, that's not going to work and that's what we see.
And there's, and there's some standards about what the hen house can even be made out of. I mean, all of that, all that's in the ordinance. Let me just say this about McCamey. And I know a lot of the people that have reached out to me about the ordinance is because McCamey did come inside and then they either had to get rid of their chickens or McCamey took them away. So I mean, I know there's probably some stories that they, maybe that they haven't taken them. But the stories that I'm aware of, you know, McCamey has enforced the ordinance of no chickens. And, you know, there's not another alternative at this point other than just to confiscate them or rehouse them. This at least gives them an opportunity to get in compliance and be able to keep their chickens.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
All right.
Have no further questions or concerns here from the council family? Okay, so then, Councilman Henderson, what is your, at this point, when you want to move forward? You want to put it on two weeks' agenda or what?
I think I need to make a couple of tweaks. So it does look like the one year is already in here. And then I think, the only other thing, and so we need to strike going to municipal court. And as far as, I mean, I think Councilwoman Dotley, your question was about J enforcement, about land development or McCamey. Huh?
Fiscal note.
Physical, yeah. I'm not sure if that'll be, I mean, I'm not sure how we will determine that. I can find out. But is that something that we could go ahead and place on the agenda? I mean, is it, I'll tell you what, let's give it, maybe like the 22nd. That gives us two full weeks to address some of these things.
July 22nd.
Would you be okay with that?
Madam Chair, are you good with that?
I am. I think, I think Councilwoman Dotley's question about a fiscal note is important. And I think for us to start stretching our muscles that way would be wise. So let's make sure we get that.
We could put it on the 22nd. We can always back it up if we need to. If you're good with that.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Family is good? Okay, so we are good. So we'll look forward to this coming back on the July 22nd as well as Madam Chair, single stair legislation. So if there is no other questions or concerns, what time will you join us?
We're going to planning zone.
Oh, oh, I'm trying to sit outside of here. Turn it off at 2:00, planning is on.
Got to sit here a little longer.
A little bit longer.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Committee. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion passes. So we've got several things on here. And Brian, thank you for being here in front of Karen.
Madam Chair, it's going to be hard to replace Karen and also following up behind the urban chicken discussion.
Hopefully this will be painless. Yeah, it'll be painless. Council, hopefully you all got a copy of the list that we're going to go over today. And just as a reminder, the items that are highlighted are the ones that specifically Brian is probably going to talk about, unless you all need no discussion. But those are the issues that had opposition or had some additional information that might be important to discuss. And then we'll end the meeting with a presentation from Megan Miles on voluntary incentive programs. So I guess we'll go forward with item number seven for final reading. Does anybody have any questions about the ordinance to approve corrections to the official zoning map? No questions? Okay.
Yeah.
Move forward. All right, so the next item we already discussed briefly, Councilwoman Clark. It's my understanding that the applicant wishes to withdraw. You're going to make the appropriate motion at our business meeting. All right. All right, so next. And just as a reminder, the item's under number eight. It's a time for us to get further education and get any questions answered by Brian. So we'll just go with the first one under Planning A, 2025-0091. And this is in District 2. Chairwoman Hill, would you like a presentation? Okay.
Sure. This is 1010 Dallas Road in North Chattanooga. This is a request to rezone from industrial, light industrial zone to CC, which is a commercial zone. It's currently being used as mini warehouses. They want to turn, tear those warehouses down and put multifamily on the property. It's roughly 2.7 acres in size. Number of units proposed is 169. That's a density of 61 dwelling units per acre. See the zoning map? It's a mixture of zones in this area. You do have CC to the north and south of the property and to the east. So commercial zone exists at this location. To the west, across Dallas Road, you do have RN2. There's been no zoning history on this piece of property. Again, here's aerial view of the property. You can see it's a mini warehouses today. To the south is commercial, Knights of Columbus. To the east, you're going up the ridge. It's steep slopes there. It's vacant land. To the north of this site's office and to the west is vacant land, which appears to be cut up into lots along North Market. Here's aerial image showing you the steep slopes to the right. You can see the orange color. That's less than 35%. So it does slope up the ridge. Here's the site plan. It was submitted with a request. Again, it's removing the mini warehouses and putting in two buildings fronting Dallas Road. Staff reviewed this, felt the request was compatible with adopted land use plan. It is compatible with adjacent land uses and a development form in the area. It is an extension of existing zone. So staff recommended approve. At Planning Commission, there was opposition present. The opposition focused on traffic and impact on normal park school and the kids walking to the school. Also felt that a traffic study should be completed and that will be required in terms of permitting when it gets to that level. Flooding was a concern and then some residents felt this was mostly a single-family neighborhood. Plan Commission reviewed the request and felt the request was compatible with adjacent land uses and development form and the land use plan and recommends to approve with no conditions. I'll be glad to answer any questions you all may have.
Chairwoman Hill, did you have some comments, questions?
Yes, thank you. So I will say, this is a property that is underutilized. It is part of a contiguous six-acre parcel in District 2. Within our affordable housing plan for the city of Chattanooga and the assessment of neighborhoods, this portion of District 2 is a high-needs area for mixed-income housing. And this property owner came to me at least two years ago and said, you know, we've got an opportunity to build luxury apartments. And can I, you know, what would your support be for that? And I said, guys, it's going to be a challenge with a community to think through the traffic concerns with any type of multifamily. But I'm willing to go to bat for you for mixed income. But let's talk about what legacy looks like. And this property owner has really been patient. And we have an application for a group that's going to try very hard to make those numbers work, to be able to do a mixed-income development. And I will say, they are pushing at their elbows at every seam related to all the different tools that we as a council have passed in the last four years and that our Affordable Housing Department Housing Office have worked on with Nicole and Megan and Hanukkah. All the innovations could potentially come home to be built here in District 2. And I'm excited about it. I will say that I know we do have some concern from way up the hill here. And the applicant is working with the neighborhoods. They have connected with the Dallas Heights Neighborhood Association. They have already been doing due diligence with the North Chattanooga Neighborhood Association and have also had contact with the business owners adjacent and the property owners up the slope. So they're doing all the right things. And we know that it's a long road to getting to shovels in the ground. Something that I always keep in mind though, Brian, is that as much as I'm excited about the potential project here, what I have to remember is I'm not zoning a project. I'm zoning a piece of property when I consider this. And so knowing that we have CC on either side, I've been looking at the allowable uses for CC. And there are a few things that I'm going to email you that I feel like probably, and you can feel free to write them down also, but I will email you all that I think I would like to add as conditions to approval for this.
So restricting some uses or?
Right, restricting some uses because CC has quite a few. And obviously, we have CC on either side. But as I look at it, I would like to condition this that it cannot be used for a hotel, which would also then limit proliferation of short-term vacation rentals in that spot. That it could not be used for an animal facility with outdoor yard. I know that Councilwoman Dotley's had some challenges with that in D7. Could not be used for vehicle repair and could not be used for a drive-through facility. Because traffic, I think in this area, we have a great, we have good infrastructure in terms of we have a divided road, we have a bike lane, we have access to a grocery store, a school, churches. It's really a great opportunity for transit-oriented development. And we've, even the developer has talked with, the applicant, excuse me, has talked with Chattanooga Neighborhood Enterprise about partnership, with CARDA about partnership. They're really doing their best to be good neighbors in this situation. So if it doesn't come together for them, we'll have a good CC parcel that would be a better, highest and best use, I think, in the future. But I will want those few conditions just to protect the neighborhood from any kind of usages that could be, you know, just detrimental to quality of life there. And we have plenty of historic non-conforming, single-family, short-term vacation rentals already. So we'll be okay without more of them.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all.
And I see no other lights. Any other questions or comments about this item? Okay, moving on to item B, 2025-0093. Councilman Harvey, this is in your district?
Nothing as of now.
No, do you need a presentation? Do you want a presentation? Okay.
Sure, this is 2025-93. This is not a rezoning. This is to lift conditions. It's out in East Brainerd. It's a multi-unit residential. The original zoning was to be mini warehouses and self-storage use only. Since that time, things have changed. They want to do townhomes. Roughly 10 acres in size. Number of units proposed are 52. It's a density of 4.94 units per acre. Again, this is rezoned in 2022 with one condition, had to be self-storage in mini warehouses. Here's aerial view. It's a mixture of uses, vacant land, single-unit residential abutting this property. Does have some natural resource in terms of floodway and floodplain on this property, which limits what you can do on it. This is the original site plan from 2022. See it in the front, along East Brainerd was an indoor climate-controlled warehousing. Into the rear was going to be the traditional mini warehouses that you would see. This is the current site plan as proposed by the applicant, is to scrap the mini warehouses and go with townhomes. Staff reviewed this and felt the request would be compatible with adjacent land uses and development form. Made more sense to have townhomes rather than mini warehouses at this location. So staff recommended deny the applicant's request to lift the condition, but add some additional conditions, residential uses only. Because if not, you'd have a wide-open CC zone sitting here. And maximum density of five dwelling units per acre. That's what the applicant had on the application. At the Planning Commission, there was opposition from one individual who lived next door. His concern was the driveway and cars passing by his house with lights. Applicant agreed to address that. And so Planning Commission felt the request was compatible. They recommended to approve with two changes to the conditions. Add a condition of residential uses only. Change the density from five to seven dwelling units per acre. And then add a 10-foot landscape buffer with a privacy fence along the shared property line of the Hamilton County tax map, 171 CB4. That's to protect that property owner who was at the Planning Commission voicing his opposition.
Councilwoman, Chairwoman Hill, did you have, or was that, so your light on? Okay. Anybody else? I don't see any other lights. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, so 2025-0087, this is in District 5. Councilman Clark, would you like a presentation?
I do not need a presentation since the queue is currently disabled. I don't need a presentation, but I will add some comments. There was only one opposition to this. It was a neighbor next door. Currently, the, these are the townhomes that are currently on Jersey Pike.
That's correct, just north of this site.
And they modeled the ones that are on the other side.
Correct.
That's on the across the street. So I'm totally in support of this with the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve. So no presentation either.
And I see no other lights, so no other questions or comments about this item? Okay, moving right along. The next item, 2025-0090, this is in District 8, the Great District 8.
Absolutely. One and only.
What is your pleasure? Do you want to, do you like a presentation?
Yeah, let me have a presentation on that.
Sure. This is case 2025-90. This is a request to rezone from RN2, residential neighborhood zone, to one of our newer zones, which is TRN2, traditional residential neighborhood zone. The proposed use is townhomes. They want to do 10 units on this site. That's roughly 30 dwelling units per acre. Look at the zoning map. This is surrounded by RN2. There's no zoning history on this piece of property, but to the north and south, you do see TRN3 in the area, like two blocks to the north and two or three blocks to the south. So there is precedent for TRN3 in this area. It's a vacant, well, actually it has a single-family dwelling on the property. To the east of the site is a duplex. And to the south are duplexes. And to the west or left of the screen is single-unit residential. And in the north is vacant land. Here's the site plan submitted with a request. You see it's traditional townhomes with parking to the rear, if you will. And that parking comes into play in a second with a condition that staff recommends is that parking abuts those homes that are on 1622 and 1624. This request is compatible with Area 3 plan. It is compatible with adjacent land uses and development form with conditions. Staff recommend to approve with the condition of a 10R, which is a 10-foot landscape buffer or a fence or a wall along the eastern property line. That's to buffer that parking lot to that homes that are next door to provide privacy. There was opposition at Planning Commission. The opposition was too much density in the area. Housing imbalance in Area 9 of this location, a lot of duplexes. When's the growth going to stop? It felt like they were concerned a lot of growth in Area 8. Plan Commission felt the request was compatible with adopted plan. It is compatible with adjacent land uses and recommend to approve with the same condition that staff recommends. So it comes to this body with an approval from Planning Commission with one condition. So it comes to this body with an approval from Planning Commission with one condition.
Okay, so thank you.
Any questions or comments? I see no lights. All right, moving to the next item. There was no opposition on the next item. This is in District Nine, 2025-0088.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know about this project yet. I had to reach out to this particular applicant a couple times, and they only reached out once, and I've called them back twice since. So as it stands now, there's like a car lot there. I'm not really, I don't even need a presentation because unless they have a better, unless we have a conversation, a conversation with the community and they're on board, this is not going for it. So.
You do or you do not need a presentation?
We don't need one right now.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna, Megan, let me do, we've got one item after you, so let's, I'm going to take care of that one item, counsel, if you're okay with that, and then we'll come back so you can finish up and allow some extra time for questions if necessary. So item G, Brian, if you will.
Sure, these are zoning text amendments. These are housekeeping issues, if you will. We've had, you know, we're used to seeing these for the past couple of months where we have the new zoning code and we realize there need to be tweaks. The first tweak is related to buildings located in the Form-based Code for existing buildings. They require a certain amount of, use a fancy word, fenestration, but it's really related to openings and windows. Form-based Code requires a certain percentage. And most of our existing buildings in the downtown are Form-based Code, do not comply with that. So if a property owner is doing interior renovations or minor renovations on the outside, they would also have to bring up or install additional windows and openings. It's very cost prohibitive. So staff is recommended to add a condition that if you have non-conforming fenestration, that's allowed to continue as long as it meets two conditions, would not create a new nonconformity or increase the degree of nonconformity, and meets the intent of Form-based Code. So this is clarifying, you can make renovations to the interior and minor renovations to the exterior, exterior without having to add additional windows and doors.
All right, any, Chairwoman Hill?
Thank you, Brian. My comments and questions are related to the setback section. If you want to go ahead and go forward on that.
Yeah, we, new zoning code went into play. We've heard from a lot of developers that the current setbacks, corner setbacks in particular related to alleys and rightaways were really prohibitive. And so staff looked at that, and this only applies to the RN13 and RN15 setbacks for corner lots. Currently, it's 15 feet. That's pretty restrictive, especially for the R3 zone. Those are very small lots anyway. So recommending change the corner side setback when it abuts an alley to five feet, and then 10 feet when it's a street. And that's in the RN15 zone. But RN13, we're recommending change both those to five feet. Those setbacks are very similar to what we used to have in RTZ and in the Form-based Code setbacks.
So I'm concerned about this, particularly as it relates to the RN13. You know, RN13 was added to the code with the intent for it to be used in traditional singly, traditionally, single-family neighborhoods that were committed to maintaining a single-family look and feel to the neighborhood, but were fine with smaller homes.
Correct.
Setbacks are a key part of the look and feel of a neighborhood. So the side corner setback puts houses much closer together. Also, the thought with an RN13 was that, you're right, the lot is smaller and the house can be smaller. And when the house is smaller, potentially, the home could potentially be afforded by someone who couldn't afford a larger home, right?
Correct.
That, that would be the goal of the way that math works. If a builder buys a piece of property that's super-duper expensive and they have to build a very expensive 900 square foot house, that's kind of their, their choice, right? But we do have, like, when you mentioned that these are for more urban forms, these tools were built not for urban forms. We have many, many urban forms for the urban overlay areas. So I'm, I'm not feeling good about a side corner street setback. So let's walk through what that actually means. So an alley at the back of a house, you have a five-foot setback. Fine with, I'm fine with that because we, as long as we've got health and safety considerations with our fire department and EMS, then we're good. But the side slash corner setback on the street, so what, the way that I understand that, Brian, is that if I'm on a corner, I only have to be five foot off, and I used to have to be 15 feet, 15 feet off a corner.
You're talking about, you're talking about RN13 zone?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
And you're saying that I used to have to be 10 feet off of my property line? And now I only have to be five feet off my property line?
That's correct. And I would say the lot of records that are recorded prior to 1961 also have these same setbacks of five foot. And if you like, we can go, RPA can be, I'd go back and look at these. Do you have some concerns with it?
That's interesting that the lots of record have the same. That's helpful.
I'm pretty sure they have the same setbacks.
You know, this, the side corner comes up for me in a major way because I just had a zoning application on Forest Avenue. And they were interested in going to the TRN.
TRN3.
And frankly, I felt like it was a good opportunity for an RN13, wasn't what the applicant wanted. And the community overall was very concerned about the corner turn and the setback of only having a building five feet off the corner.
Right. If council will like, we, RPA can go back and look at these again. I don't think that we have anything pressing on these setbacks at this point, if that's the direction this body wants to do.
I, I would, I would appreciate just a little bit more information and thought about that. I mean, setbacks are critical to maintaining the, the feel of a neighborhood, but the fact that we have a lot of record, if you'll just send me some information about that, I think that would be helpful for me to get comfortable with that. I just want that RN13 to be a really useful tool, not just in the urban core. And so, you know, if that, if that means that when that shows up on a lot in District Five or District Four or Six, and they're like, whoa, six frets, this is not going to work for me. Sorry, six frets. I think that was a children's book when I was a child. I think they were horses. But whoa, six frets. If that's going to make it such that RN13 isn't useful in our more suburban neighborhoods, then I don't think it's a good choice.
Is your concern just RN13? Are you good with RN15 or is it both of them in general?
I'm less concerned with RN15, though I will point out to my colleagues, it's not a majority, well, we've got a majority is RN16, but that starts to really be, a lot of our lots are going to be RN15 in the future. So be thoughtful about these setbacks because they're, it could have very real impacts on your neighborhoods. Yeah.
Sure, I'll send you some information there.
Thank you.
I see no other lights regarding this matter. Anything else? Thank you, Chairwoman Hill. I think it was some good comments about that. Okay.
Two other things on this. One is the, this is in the institutional zone only. It has a current setback from the, says floodway. Well, needs clarity what floodway means, so recommending to amend this section. Looks like structures within the 100-foot of the Tennessee River floodway may not exceed five, we're adding five stories and 60 feet. It currently says the minimum, minimum riverfront setback 100 feet is measured from floodway. Well, floodways can be just normal streams and stuff. So I want to be clear, this is the floodway of Tennessee River, has to be set back 100 feet. And we do have some properties that are institutionally zoned. I think it's on your agenda for tonight. They do have some buildings that will not comply with that setback, so trying to help that situation by putting, it's, it's permitted, but you also restrict the height to five stories and 60 feet, just where this location's at. And it's not citywide, it's only in institutional zone.
Chairwoman Hill, did you have comment about that? Okay. Anybody else? I see no other lights. Any other questions about that item? Is it, when it says five stories, 60 feet, is that, that?
It's either or. It's either five stories or 60, whichever one's the most restrictive.
Okay.
Okay, the last thing is related to parking. We've heard from some of our developers on medical office that the zoning code has a maximum parking percentage of 200%. And sometimes you need a lot of parking for medical and office, and they're quickly exceeding that 200%. So working with our transportation partners, we added some clarity that that number does not apply to medical office. They're calculated at a minimum of one space for 200 square feet of gross floor area to help that situation where they're not maxing out the parking pretty quickly.
I see no lights regarding that item. Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, I'll turn over to Megan.
Megan, yes.
Hello.
Hello. Sure, I've got my presentation. Let's see, okay. All right, thank you so much. Good evening, council. I'm Megan Miles, Director of Housing Policy for the city, and I am really excited to be here today to provide an update on the voluntary incentives program, or VIP for short. This is a program that was enacted into law by city council in January. So what we're bringing to you today is really a bit of housekeeping. It's a text amendment that simply updates the zoning code to reflect the ordinance that you've approved already with one change to conform with a recently passed state law, which I'll walk through in a moment. But I know a few months have passed and we have some new members on council, so I wanted to take this opportunity to just briefly revisit what the VIP is, how it works, and why we're excited about it. So this is a new tool in our affordable housing toolkit. It supports the development of mixed income housing without requiring any financial subsidy or tax incentive from the city. Chattanooga was actually the first city in the state to enact a program like this, thanks to state legislation that was passed last year. It was sponsored by Senator Todd Gardenhire and championed by Mayor Kelly's administration. So we're really proud to be leading the state on this front. And to quickly talk about what the VIP does, this is a completely voluntary program that offers zoning incentives to developers of new multifamily rental projects that set aside at least 10% of units as affordable. So these incentives offer some added flexibility that help make the inclusion of the affordable housing financially feasible, which allows us to create new affordable housing without spending public dollars or foregoing tax revenue. So specifically, these incentives include a density bonus, which can allow more smaller units within the same building envelope, a reduction in parking minimums to allow a little bit more flexibility for developers. And in some specific areas, strong markets near transit where we really want to encourage the development of new affordable housing, there's an optional 30% height bonus. So one thing to be clear about, these incentives only apply to new rental developments with five or more attached or semi-attached units, and only in areas that are already zoned for multifamily housing. So to be clear, this does not change any existing zoning. It simply provides the qualifying projects a little bit more flexibility in the areas where our council has already approved that level of development. And so really important for us on the affordable housing team, what do we actually mean when we're talking about affordability here? So for this program, affordable housing is units for households that are earning up to 80% of the area median income. So this year, that's about $60,000 for a household of two. So this means that these units are more homes that can serve essential workers like our teachers and our firefighters and our first responders. The rents and the income limits are determined every year by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So this is the standard that we follow for all of our affordable housing programs. And then to ensure accountability for these affordable units, all of these units are deed restricted, so they remain affordable for the required term. All of the rents and the incomes have to meet the HUD guidelines that I mentioned, and they have to be verified every year through a third-party service. And then the city actually conducts annual compliance reviews, and there are civil penalties for non-compliance. So if these units go out of compliance, we have opportunities to make sure that they move back into compliance. So now I'm going to talk about the change that I mentioned, which relates to the required period of affordability. And this is the reason for our delay in bringing the text amendment to this body again, which normally we would have done right after it was enacted in January. So the original state legislation required that all of the units that were created through this program, anywhere, any of these programs in the state, had to remain affordable in perpetuity, which we were defining as 99 years. So after city council adopted this program, we learned that Senator Gardenhire was planning to introduce an amendment to reduce that required affordability period from 99 years to 30 period, to 30 years. And that change was really based on feedback that was received from developers and lenders across the state that said that that 99-year period, which is very long, was a barrier to participation. So the new 30-year requirement is more aligned as well with similar affordable housing incentives programs. And so to keep our program aligned with state law, we decided to delay bringing that zoning code amendment and formalizing that until the state amendment was passed. That was signed into law in May, and so we are now ready to move forward with this final step. So here's a timeline. I won't revisit all of this, but again, just to emphasize, we are at this last step to officially codify this program in the zoning code with that one change in the reduction of affordability period from 99 years to 30 years. I'm open for questions. And then before I go, I do want to shout out RPA. Karen Renick is on a much deserved vacation this week with her family, but she has been a really important partner, as well as all the staff at RPA and LDO, who have been working with us on this program. So we have Brian here as well, but happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, I see no lights. Do we have any comments, concerns, questions? Megan, thank you for defining some of those, oh, I apologize. Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you able to send this out? If you have, I haven't seen it yet. If you can send it out, I'd like to sit with it a little bit more.
The text amendment?
No, the.
Or the presentation? Yes, happy to send this. I've sent last week the original presentation that has a little bit more details, and I will send this one to you as well.
Thank you, I saw that one. I didn't see this.
Yeah, this is a couple of new slides here.
Yeah, if you could send this one, I probably will follow up with some follow-up questions.
Happy to.
I see no other lights. Anyone else? Thank you, Megan. Thank you again for identifying some of the, or defining some of those items that we talked about.
Yes.
And there's no other questions, council members? Okay, I want to say one more thing before we recess. You all should have received an email either through Nicole, through the, through the clerk or through Brian Schultz, which is the items that'll be before the planning commission on July 14th. If you didn't receive it, let me know. Just want to make you aware of the items that are coming up for discussion with the planning commission in two weeks. With that, we are adjourned until 6 o'clock. Thank you. We have an attorney-client meeting, if you didn't hear that.
Chattanooga City Council is back in session. Madam Clerk, will you please read item 7A?
An ordinance to approve corrections for the official zoning map is referenced below.
Thank you, Council. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do I have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 8A, please.
An ordinance limiting Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 21, Sections 21, 22, and 2131 relating to code official and authority to administer and enforce chapter.
Thank you. Council, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B.
An ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right-of-way in the 500 block of East Main Street as detailed on the attached maps subject to certain conditions.
Move to defer?
Till 7:15.
To July 15.
Thank you. Council, we have a motion on the floor to defer this item until July 15th with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, please.
An ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right-of-way in the 200 block of Tremont Street as detailed on the attached maps.
Move to defer to July 15?
Thank you. Council, we have a motion on the floor to defer until July 15th with a proper second. Do I have any questions or comments? I will say both of these are in my district. Thank you for your help, Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a sanitary sewer easement in the 500 block of Oak Street beginning at MH number S-145D767, then southwest 170 feet to MHS-145D771, tax map numbers 145DJ003, 010, and 017 as shown on the attached maps subject to certain conditions.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Council, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do I have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving to resolutions. Madam Clerk, item A.
A resolution approving a new special exceptions permit for a new liquor store located at 4850 Howard 58, Suite 130, Chattanooga, Tennessee.
Councilman Clark.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the withdrawal.
So, we just want to make a motion to withdraw this item?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, great. We have a motion on the floor to withdraw. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Council, we have a motion on the floor to withdraw with a proper second. Can I...do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Council. Item B.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to award this contractor, Jamison Construction LLC, relative to contract number T-23010201 for construction services associated with the Hickory Valley Road Bridge repair in the amount of $538,620 with a contingency in the amount of $53,862 for a total amount of $592,482.
Thank you. Council, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving to purchases, please.
Good evening, Council. It's a quick trip. Daniel Harrigan, Deputy Director of Purchasing. We have five purchases recommended for approval this evening. The first is technology services. This is a one-time purchase of support system that integrates the transportation system, smart grid, and electric vehicle charging stations under the ATC MTD grant. The award goes to iTerris in the amount of $644,923.40. This purchase will utilize the by-board contract. The next is also from technology services. This is a four-month extension to include a limit increase to Verizon Agreement 556671, which coincides with the State of Tennessee contract. The new annual estimated spend will be $1,513,200. The next one is from Fleet. This is a one-time purchase of a Ford F-450 in the amount of $122,053. The award goes to Ford of Dalton as the best bid. The next one is also from Fleet. It is a one-month extension to the enterprise rental agreement 557937 to coincide with the State of Tennessee contract. No additional money will be added. And the last is Parks and Outdoors. Parks and Outdoors is requesting an increase of $9,350 for a replacement electrical cabinet. The new total cost will be $1,093,710.
Thank you very much. Council, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, Council, we have a motion on the floor to approve these purchases with a proper second. Do I have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. And we do have one RFP to read in.
The RFP format recommendation is from Technology Services and also the library for a new integrated library system. The current ILS is outdated, requiring supplementary vendor products to meet the basic functional requirements.
Thank you. Council, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Council, we have a motion on the floor to approve this RFP format request with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Councilman Henderson.
Report, ma'am.
Councilman Davis.
I'll report.
Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to announce our next meeting of the Department of Community Development Committee meeting. Typically, it's on the second Tuesday of each month, but we're going to move it to July 15th, which is the preceding Tuesday.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Elliott.
Uh...
Okay, Councilwoman Dotley.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a reminder, we will start our budget work sessions to address first respond or pay. First session will be...all the sessions will start at 9:00 a.m. And first session is July 15th. Second is July 22nd, and the third is July 29th, followed by a public hearing on August 19th, and proposed first read on August 26th, and proposed final read on September 9th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Burris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a planning and zoning committee meeting today and reviewed all of the cases that are up for vote next week, and as well as the voluntary incentive program. And it was a good meeting. I think we had some good education, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairwoman Knoll.
Yes, Madam Chair. We had the legislative committee today. We had two items that we're going to bring forth on July the 21st. That was urban chicken and the single stair. And we will...
On the 15th?
On the 15th or the 21st?
15th.
21st was chicken, 15th for the stairs. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
It's actually the 22nd, so...
Oh, it's actually the 22nd, not 7/21.
22nd.
We'll do it on a Tuesday. Let's do it on a Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, there has been one withdrawal here at this point in time of the certificate of compliance for the 58 Tennessee Corporation, so that does not need to be considered by this body at this time. There has been a certificate of compliance for the QuickTrip Corporation, DBA QuickTrip number 7141 at 5042 Summit Springway, Uldewa, that's in District 6. That has been approved at this point in time, and it's been certified that they're...all of the applicants are appropriate here for the city, and the location for this is appropriate. It is a wine and grocery type exception.
Thank you very much, Phil.
All right.
Okay, we reached the point in our meeting where we are happy to recognize persons who are here and wish to address the council. If you are here to address the council, please go ahead and line up behind the podium. Mr. Attorney, will you please read the rules?
Yes. At the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council, and here's your rules. Each speaker wishing to address the council can only be recognized at the microphone provided up front for that purpose, can have more than three minutes to speak, and you can address the council only upon matters within their legislative and quasi-judicial authority, and not upon matters which are not under their authority or regulated by other governmental bodies or agencies. Do not engage in vulgar or obscene language nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others, and address the comments to the council as a whole and not towards individual council members. And lastly, do not engage in disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting which is prohibited by Tennessee law, and someone commits that offense if a person substantially obstructs or interferes with a meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting or gathering. Having stated those rules, please go ahead, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Monty Bell, the homeless journalist, the gray-haired fox, the man with the trillion-dollar voice. News for today. When at first you fell to the sea, you lie, lie again in the state of Tennessee. There's more in this report. I don't know where you're from, but what I do have for some of you there, and it's for the county too, an ouster removal procedure. And this is what's going to happen. I don't know who educated you, I don't know where you went to college or anything like that, but you've been here tearing down my high schools and everything else, and I want you gone. Immediate removal from office ouster. This is an all-civil proceeding, so nobody gets out. I need more time. We don't have it, but let me go on. This is for the entire 11th Judicial District Court, the city of Chattanooga, County of Hamilton, and the state of Tennessee for your past due payments. $211,344,000 is still past due for your fraud. Not only that, it's for compensatory and punitive damages that involves the legal department. Now, what it says here for noncompliance, a week before last, the county attorney is on records for failure to comply with the Open Records Act. It started from the city attorney. We don't have the time. I was just taken off by the bicycle conversations when I'm living on streets. Priorities. This is very important. I'm going to leave it here for you, Madam Chair, to give to your city attorney. He doesn't understand what law on the court means. He certainly doesn't understand what a removal from office ouster is. We're going to start with the county attorney on tomorrow, and I guarantee you when I remove you, sir, you're going to understand I can come to Signal Mountain anywhere you are to remove you by the advice of Monty Bell, the homeless journalist, the gray-haired fox demanding the $200,000 bonus. $211,344,000 is for your fraud. I'm going to cut this short. We all know that the county attorney is gone. We all know that. We all know that there's a Janie Parks Furnell, who is a defendant in my cause, who's now taking his place. With the seconds remaining, $211,344,000 is past due for your fraud. It's past due. Today is July the 1st. I've had enough. You're a noncompliance, and you've gotten the Department of the Treasury, Comptroller's, Toni Chapman and her department involved in your mess. $211,344,000 is for your fraud. Keep your police away. I'm enforcing these sanctions. I guarantee you.
Council, what is your pleasure? Thank you very much. We adjourn.